All right, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, June 4th, 2025 meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. I'd like to start out by welcoming our latest addition representing the Washoe County Water Conservation District, Mr. Eddie Qualieri. So, welcome. And with that, I'd like to start off with a roll call.
Right. Casey Mensah.
Here.
Chris Melton.
Here.
Eric Crump.
Here.
John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Bill, uh, sorry, Eddie Qualieri.
Here.
Daniel Henderson. Mylan Nguyen. Donna Noel. Amber Sosa. Kara Stilin. Michael Widmer. Jennifer Carr. David Kelly. We have a quorum.
Thank you. So, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comments. Have we received any public comments?
I have none.
Anyone from the public wishing to come down and comment right now? All right, moving on then. Item Number Three, Approval of the Agenda.
I'd like to move to approve the agenda.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Flansburgh. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Second by Vice Chair Melton. All in favor? Or any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Item Number Four, Approval of the Minutes from the May 7th, 2025 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting. Looking for a motion.
Chair, I have reviewed the minutes and moved to approve.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Flansburgh. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Sosa. Uh, any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item Number Five, Presentation and Report Regarding Progress and Status of Sierra Nevada Journeys One Water Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics STEM Education Program. All right, Ms. Whitaker.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission. Birgitte Whitaker for the record. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Sean Hill, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Sierra Nevada Journeys. And the WRWC has been providing some funding to Sierra Nevada Journeys to develop a STEM program regarding One Water Nevada. And Mr. Hill is here to give us an update. Mr. Hill.
Hello, everyone. Sean Hill for the record. Good afternoon, Commission staff. Thanks for giving me a chance here to talk up our program. You all are helping support a little program with a big impact, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more about it today. See if our clicker works. Okay, so a little bit of background about SNJ. We're here. Here's a couple of staggering stats. This describes the why. Seventy percent of teachers spend less than three hours each week on science education. This is in elementary school. And in many cases, much less than three hours, let alone any sort of watershed education, let alone, let alone any sort of local Truckee River watershed education. Combined with that, you have statistics showing that children are in front of screens fifteen times more than they are spending time in the outdoors. So, I tell people all the time, I wish we weren't necessary, but unfortunately for these reasons. So, we do STEM in outdoor education, and there's a lot of kids in the community that we're their only STEM experience in the school year, and we might be their only structured or unstructured experience in the outdoors all year long. Our mission then is to deliver innovative, outdoor, science-based education programs for youth to develop critical thinking skills and to inspire natural resource stewardship. A little bit of background about our programs, Classroom's Unleashed, that's where we go into the community. We go into schools, and we'll do hands-on STEM presentations. And then we take the kids to a local natural area, and we apply the learning that we've been doing in the classroom. So, whether that's a fifth-grade watershed trip with a trip to the Truckee River on McCarran Ranch, or a third-grade Habits and Habitats program where we're talking about living things and riparian ecosystems, and then taking the kids to the Oxbow Nature Study, we're providing that kind of comprehensive classroom and field experience. We do have a camp, so a lot of people know about us because of the camp that we run in Plumas County. And then we also have that Classroom's Unleashed program. We're working in the region in Sacramento as well. So, we're representing Truckee River watershed, Feather River watershed, and the American River watershed with all of our different groups that we were working with. We have community partner programs, both at camp and through some after-school programming that we do. And then, of course, Family STEM Nights, which is the vehicle for the program that we'll be talking more about today. Served 28,000 students. That's organization-wide in 2024. Fifty-eight percent from low-income communities, sixty-two percent students of color, fifteen percent living with, students living with a disability. As a nonprofit, our, our goal is to reach those highest in need, and our scholarship program ensures that we are able to do that. We had some external evaluations show that six percent more students score at the proficient level on state science exams at schools where our programs are delivered. And that's a, that's a decent, you know, if you're in education, six percent on the state science exam, that's a meaningful number. And that's statistically significant. So, the Family STEM Night program, these are two-hour events. There's a whole lot of these that we run here in Northern Nevada. Whole families are invited, so it's multi-generational. You know, the kiddos there, the third grader, and then his brother in eighth grade, and then mom and dad, sometimes grandma, uncle's aunts. We provide interactive STEM stations and watershed stations. And we've built three watershed stations specific to this idea of water as a scarce resource. And, you know, that, that can and should be recycled. We, we end the event with a family design challenge, and we're doing around forty or fifty of these a year here in Northern Nevada. Average attendance at these events is around a hundred people. So, the One Water STEM Education Program is, you know, hands-on stations with one-water messaging that's appropriate to families. It's a low-touch, you know, early education around a concept that, as we all know, can be maybe met with resistance when you start talking about recycled water. And so, we're introducing these concepts in a Family STEM Night environment. Programming decisions, it was designed in conjunction with experts in the field here locally. And year-two budget, we had planned on serving twenty-seven schools, and we ended up serving thirty-three schools with these Family STEM Nights, reaching twenty-six hundred, two thousand six hundred and sixty-five participants. The budget is mainly for program delivery, although we, a part, a part of that budget is also for sort of program assessment and then redesign of curriculum, which we've, we do a lot, because sometimes the idea works and sometimes the idea doesn't work. And so, we're always constantly trying to improve. I'll show you the schools that we've served, and then I will show you, I'll talk a little bit more about the stations. So, I won't read all these off. We also have a written report that, that shows all these. Shows the number of students, the school. I didn't include the county here, but I think that you might recognize some of these school names. Seeing a lot of Washoe County here. I see Cottonwood is Fernley. So, what is that story, right? No, Lyon, sorry. Let's see if anything else is non-Washoe on this first one. The rest of those look like Washoe. You can see we're, we're at a lot of the schools in the region that have a high percentage of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch, which is our, the proxy that we can use for recognizing the socioeconomic level of those schools and families. Mostly Washoe, but you can see Silver Spring, Cottonwood Elementary. We do work in other counties on occasion as well. Okay, so the three stations, the first one is no such thing as new water. This is basically trying to show the concept of an aquifer. And so, we have students pumping water in and out of our aquifer model. And then we have that discussion of, you know, groundwater and how important groundwater is and what, what groundwater is. The fact that it's, you know, it's hard to recharge those areas. And, yeah, we did a little redesign. We improved the pumping system, so this activity is running pretty well right now. Again, hands-on concept, you know, concept forward. Station two, this is the one where we're allocating, we're having the students allocate water resources by, we used to do it with water, and we were having some cleanup and mold issues. So, this year, we tried blue corn to represent water. And they are, students are, you know, thinking about a household or a community and allocating where they think the water resources are going, should go. And then we follow up with that with real data about how those water resources are spread in the community and used in the community. And then the third one, we're still working on this one. We wanted, we originally had a filtration activity. It was, it was hard to reproduce with multiple families at an event. So, it's, right now, we're showing materials, and it's, it's a little content-heavy, and it's a little less hands-on. So, we want to take this one back to the drawing board and keep working on this filtration activity. So, that's, let's clean some water. So, we have some curriculum improvement we want to do summer of 2025. Kim, I'll reach out, because want to get your take on especially that filtration activity and maybe do some brainstorming. Roll out the updated stations in the fall and continue to reach thousands of local youth during the next school year. And thanks again. This is just, it's an impactful program, and it's really a nice partnership to just the support of this body, having a nonprofit in the community. We feel like we have a good outreach mechanism with these programs. And this is, this is an ideal partnership for us. So, thank you for your support. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it back to the Commission for comments and questions.
All right. Anyone have any comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Flansburgh.
Sean, I had the opportunity to also hear some of your comments this morning at the Reno City Council, and appreciate that. And I just have to applaud, I mean, the getting families together on the Family STEM Nights, what a great idea, because they don't just do it there and then don't think about it again, right? They, they bring it, they take it home. They, they continue to work on that. It's just getting the families involved is huge. And so, appreciate that, but appreciate getting kids outdoors, getting them excited about science, getting excited about being there and what's going on and, and understanding their impact and influence that they can have on the environment. So, just thank you for all your work. Applauded a hundred percent.
I, I appreciate that. It takes a village. I agree with you. It's extremely important to get kids connected to our natural spaces, what's many times in their backyard, and they don't get to experience that. So, I totally agree, and thank you for the acknowledgement.
Are there any comments from the Commission?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you as well. This is a, you know, been a pleasure to see the development of this curriculum and its implementation. And, I mean, even with your goal of going to twenty-seven schools and being able to do thirty-three, you know, I think that's a, you know, a really great way to see the allocation of the funds that you've been provided to, you know, kind of go above and beyond, you know, what your original goals were. My, my wife has been an elementary school teacher in the district for a number of years now, and she does SNJ's Hands in the Riverfield trip every year. And it is like the absolute highlight of her entire, you know, school year. The kids just absolutely love it. And being able to provide that kind of water education, I, I think is incredibly valuable for our community. And I know that I've certainly heard her talk about the impacts on her students for the kind of curriculum that you provide, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you so much. All right. Item Number Six, Presentation and Report Regarding Progress and Status of Truckee Meadows Stormwater Quality Management Program and Watershed Assessments. Ms. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Birgitte Whitaker for the record. I'd like to introduce Chris Holman, who is a senior engineer at the city of Reno, and he is also the coordinator of the Truckee Meadows Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee. And Chris is here to give us an update on the stormwater quality program as well as the watershed assessments program that are part of our planning effort.
Thanks, Birgitte. Thank you all for having me. This is a very well-represented commission. Again, Chris Holman, City of Reno, Senior Civil Engineer, also the coordinator for the Truckee Meadows Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee. Just wanted to come here and provide an update on what the committee has done over the last year and talk a little bit about how funding from our WRWC agreement benefits the committee. So, to start, I guess the first big update is that Teresa Jones, previously with the city, shepherded the program for another part of the decade. She has since retired. And I was hired last year to take over her spot. So, a quick reminder, on the basis of what our program is, we have an MS4 permit. It's a joint permit between cities of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. And essentially, it authorizes the discharge of stormwater to the Truckee River and tributaries. So, in order to comply with that, we are required to develop a stormwater management program, which is essentially a program that outlines all of the ways that jurisdictions eliminate or prevent pollutants from getting into stormwater. So, we're still operating under the 2010 permit and the 2011 stormwater management program. So, the elements that go into our MS4 permit, I wanted to kind of separate the elements on the right. Those are all programs that are run by the individual jurisdictions themselves. So, construction site management, municipal operations, it's not shown up there, but industrial operations as well. Each jurisdiction is responsible for ensuring compliance and controls to ensure that pollutants are reduced to water bodies. Same with post-construction BMPs and illicit discharge detection and elimination. So, those are the individual jurisdictions. But what's highlighted on the left are really the elements that we benefit from our agreement with WRWC and that funding. So, public outreach and education and our monitoring program. And then in the middle there is really what's important, and it's the function of the Stormwater Committee itself, which is made up of two members from Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. And we have monthly meetings, and then ultimately, we are responsible for providing an annual report to NDEP documenting our compliance for the year. So, before we get into those elements, just a breakdown of the funding that we receive from WRWC. So, $262,500 was awarded last month. So, thank you to the Commission, both Commissions, for that. So, of that, $204,500 goes into stormwater quality. So, the biggest of that is our water quality monitoring program. So, that is split between WRWC and NDOT 7525, so $178,000 from WRWC, $11,000 for our USGS North Truckee Drain Stream Gauge Maintenance Cooperation. And then the next item, miscellaneous stormwater quality management consultant services, $11,500. That really is everything else that we do with our program. So, that could be rewriting manuals to help contractors know what BMPs are for, important for construction sites. That could be updating our LID manual, providing water quality trends analyses, you know, kind of all that extra stuff. So, $11,500 this year, and that's important when I get to the next slide. Another $4,000 for field supplies and equipment. That really is updating our equipment for our monitoring program. $55,000 goes to funding a position that we have at the city of Reno, which helps coordinate all of our monthly meetings, providing outreach, and then writing that annual report. And then another $3,000 for public outreach, technical guidance, and education. Separate from that, we did get $65,000 additionally for watershed assessments. And that happened in fiscal year '24 as well as last month for the fiscal year '26. Before I go on, I just wanted to point out those numbers in the bottom right. Those are the budget allocations from each jurisdiction for all of those other elements, you know, construction site, industrial, municipal operations, all that. So, this graph really shows the breakdown of that WRWC funding relative to what we use for stormwater monitoring. So, that first bar on the left is that $262,500 that we receive. The second bar is our allocation for the monitoring program. So, that's an agreement with Balanced Hydrologics. That was that $237,000 for this year. And then those next two bars are the 7525 split between WRWC and NDOT. So, just wanted to point out, if you look at the first and second bars, that second bar continues to gain on the first bar year over year. And it's not unexpected. It's the, the cost of doing business. We all know in our industry that things are getting more expensive. And that's, you know, the expenses of our consultant that provides those services as well as lab fees. But it continues to take up a much bigger portion of the overall budget. And so, for the first time in fiscal year '24, we requested additional funding for watershed assessments. And then again, for fiscal year '26. So, previous to that, those watershed assessments came out of that WRWC funding. Now, it's separate, and you'll see that we don't have a lot of room left for those other miscellaneous items that we've provided in the past. So, just wanted to point that out, because in the future, we will have to start making decisions about augmenting funding or reducing the services that we provide. So, the water quality monitoring program, again, this is a, an agreement we have with Balanced Hydrologics, where they sample stormwater and base flow throughout the Truckee Meadows. There's twelve tributary sites and four urban outfalls. They do a combination of auto samplers and grab samples. And each year, we evaluate those efforts to see if any changes are necessary. And that goes into a sampling and analysis plan. And that plan identifies tributaries, locations on the tributary, constituents, frequency, those sorts of things. So, with that, that is an annual monitoring program that we provide a report to NDEP every year. We have separately out of that miscellaneous funding for this year tasked Balance with providing a water quality trends analysis. So, that's really going to characterize that data and help us understand where there might be problem areas, any of those red flags. And it also will help us to look at the efficiency of our program. So, if we have a sampling site that is continuing to show the same data year over year, it might be the best use of our money to move that sampling site and get new data. Public outreach component, we provide a lot of services. Really, it's our opportunity to reach out to the general population to help them understand the impacts of their actions on water quality. So, a few highlights. That first photo is of a training with contractors to help them understand construction BMPs and the ways that they can reduce pollutants on their projects. Second photo is outreach with students that we, probably our, our most fun events is working with the students, catch them while they're young. That third photo is something new for us this year, but we partnered with Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful at their cleanup day to provide beaver fencing on large trees along the Truckee River to help prevent against beaver damage. And that was a, a local laborers' union that did great work and got done much quicker than we thought they would. And then we've also partnered with Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation in their efforts to keep dog waste out of water bodies. So, we also provide watershed assessments. Like I said, we try to do it annually. It doesn't always happen. But we've been doing it since 2005, and that's really another component of our monitoring program, a way to look at the watersheds and see what changes may have occurred and try and pair that with the monitoring data. So, you know, we really are evaluating impacts from several things that have happened in the watershed, performing a proper functioning condition assessment, which is a BLM methodology, which, you know, really what we're looking at is erosion, sedimentation, noxious weed proliferation, those sorts of things. So, NCE has provided this year's assessments. They looked at nine different reaches, and not much has changed since the last time each of those individuals, individual reaches was assessed, except for White's Creek. And I think White's Creek, if I'm understanding correctly, was kind of a last-minute request because there was known issues of erosion within that specific reach. And so, that was added kind of last minute. So, this assessment really confirmed that there was a localized extreme precipitation event that really impacted erosion and head-cutting within that reach specifically, or one of the White's Creek reaches that was assessed. The rest kind of stayed in the same condition that they were in, in prior assessments. But what it really confirms is that those creeks are really sensitive to precipitation events. And because we didn't see any specific development on that White's Creek reach, you know, we know that that sensitivity is important for us to have riparian vegetation and appropriate setbacks in those areas so that that reach can respond appropriately to those precipitation events. Oh, one other thing I did want to mention is that the Galena Creek reaches were assessed after the Davis Fire. So, you know, we would expect to see damage through there, but we would have to perform additional assessments in the future to understand that. For the 2026 watershed assessments, we're just getting started based on the approved funding, so thank you for that. And really, that process is the committee gets together. Each individual agency will bring forward watershed changes, whether it's development or restoration projects, fires, floods, those sorts of things. And the committee will start there and then reach out to other agencies, whether it's NDOT or TOMWA, see if there's things we want to look at. And then we compare that to the last time that a reach may have been assessed. So, that map that I have before you shows the last time that each reach was assessed. So, you know, some reaches that are undeveloped, we may not assess for a long time. Other ones that have ongoing development, we may want more frequency in our assessments. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight a couple of projects with the city. You know, we do these watershed assessments, but ultimately, we want to get to the place where we have actionable projects that are doing some good based on what we're figuring out. And so, with the city, we had a project last year to restore Chalk Creek. So, it was about 1,500 feet of highly in-size channel that saw a lot of hydro modification because of development. And that was restored with riprap, boulders, and revegetation. FW Carson was our contractor. They did a great job. We're really happy with that. And then the one on the right is a project that we're just starting. We received a Truckee River Fund grant to look at weed management, specifically Tall Whitetop. So, this project, we're partnering with Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation. And really, what it's going to do is help us to improve our own processes. So, between the different departments at the city, whether it's utility services, maintenance and operation, then our parks folks, you know, we're all kind of have our fingers in weed management. And this really helps us to refine our processes, be more efficient, and understand what does and doesn't work with a noxious weed like Tall Whitetop, which is especially problematic. So, that's going to be a three-year project. Again, that's in the Chalk Creek watershed, so we're really excited about that. And with that, thank you for having me and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Mr. Chair, are there any questions or comments from the Commission?
Thank you, Chris. It's great to see how the planning efforts are, you know, being turned into genuine projects that are impacting our region for the better. Are there any questions or comments by the Commission? Yes.
Hey, Chris, a large part of the budget goes towards the stormwater monitoring. Can you just describe to the Commission when that actually happens? It's not like a Monday through Friday, kind of like 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM kind of thing, right?
Right. So, essentially, So essentially, how that works is our consultant gets samples to storm events and two base flow events for the year, so kind of comparing stormwater runoff versus what's just naturally out in these watersheds. And so, you know, really, it's focused on the months that we have precipitation, and the rest of the year, it's more looking at that data. They write an annual monitoring report. So there's other work that they do throughout the year, but the sampling and analysis portion of that is really confined to precipitation events. And then those two base flow samples that they get on the 16 different locations.
Any other questions or comments? Yes. Commissioner Enlow.
Chris, thank you. I appreciate all the efforts this committee's doing on the monitoring and the stream assessments and so forth, and I was glad to see those couple of examples of actionable projects. And I guess that's my question is, I mean, I perceive that this group has funding limitations. Monitoring is great, but implementation of actionable projects to mitigate problem areas is really where this community should be going. And I know we all have funding constraints and so forth, and I don't know if you could just comment on kind of the results of the monitoring and the stream assessments and so forth. And in your perfect world, what kind of funding would be needed to start making, I'll say, more of an impact based on what you know today?
So, just to back up all the way and discuss our monitoring efforts, so separate from, like a wastewater treatment plant, we have a load allocation for non-point source, but there aren't specific water quality requirements. So the monitoring program is really looking at the whole to see, you know, what's changing more than anything. And so I'll say that we are doing that water quality trends analysis. That will inform us better on specific water quality standards. But as far as funding, yes, I think we all know that budgets are very tight, and with the city, we are trying to balance stormwater erosion control, storm drain projects, sanitary sewer projects. And so, you know, it's really a challenge to be able to do everything. And we know we have specific needs, but as far as stormwater, we have a capital improvements program that we are starting to develop that will identify those needs, and we'll just try and balance those against those other types of projects. But funding is very short, I will say, for all jurisdictions to deal with those types of projects. We try and get grants, seek other opportunities for those projects as well, as they're available, but some of those are going away as well.
I have a question. Is it possible with the renewal of the MS4 permit that you might see an increased need for projects or an increased need for monitoring efforts?
So right now, the early indications are that there won't be huge changes to our permit, and just basing that on the renewal of Clark County's permit, we're not expecting to see huge changes in the program as a whole. I think that's a good indication that what has been done previously is working. So, no, I don't think it's going to be more of the same. We know we need more funding, for sure, for projects, but I don't think there's going to be a huge increase in what we're required to do based on the permit.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the commission? All right, well, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Up next on the agenda, item number seven, action discussion, possible direction to staff and recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission, WRWC, for approval of a scope of work and funding not to exceed $612,654 from the Regional Water Management Fund, RWMF, with a project completion date of June 30, 2028, for an interlocal agreement between the WRWC and the University of Nevada Reno, UNR, Nevada Water Innovation Institute, ENWE, to provide regional water management coordination and technical support. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, Kim Rigdon for the record, and I definitely need you to make those a little bit shorter agenda items, so that's not so difficult to read, so I apologize for that. Now, at our October 2024 priority setting, the members of the commission did prioritize continuing to receive regional coordination and technical assistance from the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. They've been providing these services since 2017, to the One Water Nevada Initiative, as well as regional partners on a variety of water planning issues, primarily focused over the last few years on the American Flat Project and advanced purified water studies and moving forward with technical assistance on those projects. You heard a lengthy presentation, very detailed presentation, at our last meeting, so I didn't want to have Dr. Pagila give another presentation, but Dr. Pagila, the Director of Nevada Water Innovation Institute, is here to answer questions if you need to, if you have any burning questions on the scope of work. If you look in your board packet under item 7A, there's a detailed scope of work with all the tasks that they are committed to. I just wanted to say, you know, it's been my observation over the last five years working with them, can't believe it's been five years, but it's been my observation that they are extremely flexible in adding special projects, tasks, scopes of work as needed as we move through some of these items. So these tasks are meant to be a comprehensive approach to what we might need, but if there are additional things that we need, they're always open and flexible to including other projects or studies or technical assistance as it comes up. So they've been very flexible, and we appreciate working with them. So it looks like a big sticker price of $612,000, $654,000, but we have budgeted that over three years, and we approved in the priority setting $200,000 for fiscal year '25. We'll bring that back at each priority setting each year to affirm that that's still a priority to the commission and be available for approval through the budget process. And with that, Chairman and members of the commission, we can take questions, and we have Dr. Laura Hock and Dr. Pagila here, if you have any questions on that. Thank you so much.
All right. So I'll open it up to the commission for questions or comments on the proposed scope of work. Yes, Commissioner Enlow.
I just wanted to comment. I was the one that really had some questions on the scope of work last time and asked Krishna to get together with staff, particularly on just some of the scope items at American Flat. And I know he worked with TOMWA staff, and we have those questions addressed, so I would be happy to support a motion to approve this work. I'd be, Krishna and ENWE and Laura and everybody there have been invaluable over the last number of years in getting us where we are today on a number of projects, so thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Yes.
Chair, just, we did, we had the presentation last time, so we understand what's in the scope. I don't, doesn't, the scope did not change, it appears, from what we saw last time, and fully supportive of this item. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Flansburgh. I also, you know, I know that I've talked very fondly about the work that UNR and WE have been able to, you know, do for, you know, Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, WRWC, but I really would second what Commissioner Enlow said, and, you know, I think that there is tremendous value that the university brings with their expertise and their flexibility to tackle a lot of these really nuanced projects. And so I just, I wanted to say that I'm excited that this is, you know, continued to come before the board, because I think that it really brings a lot of value. All right. With that, if anyone has any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion, I believe. Commissioner Enlow, you had one in mind?
I'm just going to read what Kim has here. That's the easiest way. I move that the NNWPC forward a recommendation to the WRWC for approval of UNR's ENWE scope of work and funding not to exceed $612,654 from the Regional Water Management Fund in accordance with the fiscal year funding as shown in the staff report.
All right. We have a motion, looking for a second?
Happy to second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight, discussion and possible direction to staff regarding agenda items, meeting dates, and locations for future NNWPC meetings. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, Kim Rigdon for the record. So our, we don't, we do not have July meetings in practice with past practice, and so our next meeting will be August 6 at 1:30 here in the Washoe County chambers. And we'll have a full agenda, since we are skipping our July meeting, with mostly project presentations and updates and anything else that comes up with our wastewater regionalization efforts moving forward, we'll be reporting on that. And if the commission has any specific requests, we'd like to hear that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All right. This item is for possible action, so if anyone has a motion?
I'll move to set the next meeting for the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission for August 6 at 1:30 in commission chambers.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Flansburgh. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Second, Commissioner Crump. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, commission comments. Are there any commission members wanting to make a comment at this time? All right. Well, we'll close out item nine, open up item 10, staff comments.
No staff comments here? No staff comments, thank you.
All right. Closing item 10 then, opening up item 11, public comment. Have we received any public comment?
It wasn't that rush, but P.
All right. I'm presuming nobody here wants to come down and provide public comment? All right. With that, we'll close item number 11 and open up item 12. I don't need a motion. All right, meeting adjourned.